We will follow this meeting in order. Would you call and roll, please?
Councilman Reekert?
Yes.
Councilman Chester?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange?
Here.
Councilman Solis?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. This morning, our invocation will be by the illustrious sir Ron Bass. Where'd he go? There he is, over there. The hard-nack man.
Ron Bass, right?
Sir, right up here to the podium, please, sir. Ron has passed potentate at the Shout Out Shrine Temple and one of the directors for the Dixie Shrine that brings an awful lot of people to Panama City Beach, and we appreciate your service today.
Thank you. That is great. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this day. We especially give you thanks for these men and women as they undertake the task of running their city. It's a daunting task, and we know that they work very hard at this. Also, Father, we'd like to thank our and get your blessings upon our first responders as they go about doing their daily business. And, Father, especially our men and women who are in service around the world who is in harm's way, protecting our way of life and giving us a better life. And, Father, we ask your help on our Shriners Hospital. We have twenty-two of them, our doctors and nurses. As each day, they make a miracle happen, and we want to be able to continue that. Heavenly Father, we'll give you the praise and glory for all these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Accompanying Ron this morning is past potentate Mike Dodum, who retired from the Beach Police as a major, and we appreciate him being here with us. And pledge today will be by Councilwoman Strange.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Best promotion of the approval amendment for the budget workshop of July the seventh and the regular meeting of July the twentieth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Matt Cork.
Councilman Reekert?
Yes.
Councilman Chester?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange?
Yes.
Councilman Solis?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I appreciate motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Reekert?
Yes.
Councilman Chester?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange?
Yes.
Councilman Solis?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. Item number six today is, first, is Shout Out Shrine Temple presentations to the Police Department and Parks Recreation. Jim, past potentate Michael Odom and Ron Bass.
We thank you for indulging us, and we really don't realize how much you guys mean to us when we get ready to put this thing on. We've got about three or four hundred, getting up to about five hundred Shriners and their ladies and their families coming into town. You just can't do it without great, great people in the background. These two entities that we want to talk about this morning, y'all should be very, very proud of them, because I know we are. And with that, Michael, if you would give maybe the Panama City, whichever one you'd like to do first. Parks and Recreation? These guys been over, his crew and the ladies up there have been over backwards to help us to pull this off, because we tore down the hotel about halfway through the, we're ready for the convention, so what do we do next? And went to these people, and they bailed us out, and just did an awesome, awesome job, and we very much appreciate it.
Well, Jim, I'd like to present this plaque, this is to the staff of Panama City Beach Parks and Recreation, to men and women who make up the Dixie Shrine Association, wish to express our sincere appreciation for the support and help you have shown us for the past eleven years. The Dixie Shrine Association is made of thirteen temples from Alabama, Florida, Georgia, Mississippi, and Tennessee. Would you please tell every one of your staff that they are only, they were top-notch and they helped, and we appreciate it?
Sure.
And we're gonna be calling on them again this year, because I'm the president.
Oh, no.
But that, that crew would go out there at six-thirty in the morning to blow off that asphalt, all that asphalt out there, so they could actually compete with their Harleys. This next group, I can't say enough about, about them. Our, our Chief of Police, bless his heart, he tried his best to get out there and do something, but something kept interfering this year. So they sent us a lieutenant to be the judge. Now, to give you a little background on that, what happens is that these guys compete, they compete in their uniform, how they dress, all the vehicles, they have to pass an inspection on whether they're drivable and all that other good stuff, and these guys do the inspection. Well, I'm gonna tell you what, that Marine lieutenant you had got up in those guys' face and did an absolutely awesome job. After it was all over with, the guys kept saying, you know, I don't know where y'all got them from, but that happens to be the best judge we've ever had, and they were just pleased, because they, it's a very big, it's bragging rights, you know, you don't get no money, but it's a bragging rights, when you can beat somebody from Tennessee or Alabama or Georgia. So it's a big deal, and our police department have always been there, they've taken care of us and looked out for us, and we really, we really appreciate them. So, Chief, would you please come on up?
On behalf of the thirteen temples that make up the Dixie Shrine Association, we would like to thank the men and women of the Panama City Beach Police Department for your support and help during our annual meeting. You helped us to make it a success. The Dixie Shrine Association consists of Shriners from Alabama, Florida, Georgia, Mississippi, and Tennessee, and as of this date, all members of the Panama City Beach Police Department are honorary members of the Dixie Shrine Association.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for indulging us, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate the city council for all that they do to make Panama City Beach attractive to those people who come here.
Thank you.
Next is my, oh, next is a proclamation to my good friend Till Bruitt, and Councilman Reekert will take care of that. Step right up, Till.
Another pretty face. Two thousand and ten, we had a vacancy, the city appoints two people to the airport, and we had a vacancy, and Mr. Till Bruitt was quietly non-political. He wasn't the old guard, he wasn't the new guard, he was just the righteous and the honorable guard. So he was, he was willing to serve beginning on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and ten. Served six years on the airport board, and as we saw in the media, that board went from, you would hear nothing but negative and what was going on wrong, and where's the water drinking, and who's suing whom, and so forth, to look at the numbers that are growing, the visitors that are coming, and Mr. Bruitt was on that board for six years, part of which, most recently, I mean, that's a terrible thing to do to the chairman of the board, is to retire him because of term limits, but Till graciously served those six years and was part of the turning that airport around, is doing great, and we appreciate it. So therefore, therefore, on this wonderful rainy day, a proclamation thanking Till Bruitt for his service as the city representative on the airport authority board, whereas Mr. Bruitt was chosen as representative to the board on the twenty-fourth of June two thousand and ten. During his two terms, he has seen and guided the airport expansion to accommodate all the new visitors and residents in our area. Mr. Bruitt was chosen as chairman during his last term in acknowledgement of his expertise, and whereas now he can return to his hobbies as an avid golfer, that was not my term being one of his golf partners, as an avid golfer and fisherman. It's the city's and the airport authority's loss for his being able to only serve two terms on behalf of the city. So now, therefore, be it resolved that I, John Reekert, as emissary from my conscience as mayor of the City of Panama City Beach, hereby proudly proclaim this rainy day of August the eleventh, two thousand sixteen, as Till Bruitt Day, and thank him for his service through all of this.
That's a very appropriate study for today, water and wastewater.
Yes, it is.
Anyhow, it was a pleasure. I enjoyed it. It was a challenge. It was a challenge met, and it was actually fun. It kept me off the streets, all that kind of stuff. So, Mike, if you need any help with anything else, feel free to give me a hug.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate the council and the whole city of Panama City Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is some of the comments, with limited three minutes, if you'd like to speak on anything on the agenda, either the regular or the consent agenda. Come to the podium, give your name and address, and have at it.
We have Bernie Thompson filled out a slip.
Comments at the end, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to step up here and talk, or not?
Will it be public comments at the end?
There always is.
Yes, sir, always. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Consent agenda, item number one.
We have eight items today. Revision of the city master audit list to remove obsolete items. All departments have been asked to update their audit lists for surplus, obsolete equipment, vehicles, et cetera. These items are to be removed from the city master audit list. Staff recommends approval. By approval of this matter and the consent agenda, the city council makes a finding of surplus for these items and approves their removal from the master audit list. Number two, Resolution sixteen-one-oh-one, CRI engagement letter fiscal year two thousand sixteen audit. A resolution approving and authorizing execution of an agreement with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram LLC for the annual audit and evaluation of the city's financial statements for fiscal year ending nine-thirty-sixteen in the amount of one hundred eight thousand four hundred dollars. Number three, Resolution sixteen-one-oh-four, CRA two thousand seventeen, near-term work plan. A resolution of the city council of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, annex officio as the governing body of the Panama City Beach Community Redevelopment Agency relating to the community redevelopment within the Front Beach Road redevelopment area, providing for findings, authorizing and directing the execution of a near-term work plan and providing and for an effective date. Number four, Resolution sixteen-one-oh-six, bid award. Purchase of thirty-one radio telemetry unit RTU panels. Be it resolved that the appropriate officers of the city are authorized but not required to execute and deliver on behalf of the city that certain agreement between the city and Champion Controls, Inc., relating to the purchase of thirty-one lift station, radio telemetry unit panels in the basic amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred dollars in substantially the form attached and presented to the council today, draft dated August first, with such changes, insertion, or omissions as may be approved by the city manager, and whose execution of such agreement shall be conclusive evidence of such approval. Number five, Resolution sixteen-one-oh-seven, bid award. Purchase of a compact track loader. Be it resolved that the appropriate officers of the city are authorized but not required to execute and deliver on behalf of the city that certain agreement between the city and Rental LLC Bobcat of Panama City relating to the purchase of one compact track loader with forestry attachments in the basic amount of eighty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars in substantially the form attached and presented to the council today, draft dated August first, with such changes, insertion, or omissions as may be approved by the city manager, and whose execution of such agreement shall be conclusive evidence of such approval. Six, Resolution sixteen-one-oh-eight, seedlings for the conservation park. Be it resolved that the appropriate officers of the city are authorized but not required to execute and deliver on behalf of the city that certain agreement between the city and Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, Florida Forest Service, Andrews Nursery, relating to the purchase of ninety-six thousand containerized longleaf pine seedlings and a hundred and ten thousand containerized wire grass seedlings for the next phase of site restoration at the conservation park, in a total amount not to exceed forty-five thousand fifty dollars in substantially the form attached and presented to the council today, with such changes, insertions, or omissions as may be approved by the city manager, and whose execution of such agreement shall be conclusive evidence of such approval. Seven, Resolution sixteen-one-oh-nine, bid award. Street resurfacing project fiscal year two thousand sixteen. Be it resolved that the appropriate officers of the city are authorized but not required to execute and deliver on behalf of the city that certain agreement between the city and GAC contracting relating to the street resurfacing of Cobb Road, Clara Avenue, portions of Fairway Boulevard, and the intersection of Wood Trail Drive and Sandalwood Lane, in the basic amount of four hundred twenty-seven thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars in substantially the form attached and presented to the council today, with such changes, insertions, or omissions as may be approved by the city manager, whose execution of such agreement shall be conclusive evidence of such approval. Eight, Resolution sixteen-one-ten, bid award. Caladium circle drainage improvements project. Be it resolved that the appropriate officers of the city are authorized but not required to execute and deliver on behalf of the city that certain agreement between the city and Sykes Construction, Inc., relating to the execution of Caladium Circle Drainage Improvement Project in the basic amount of a hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-four, yup, nine hundred and fifty dollars in substantially the form attached and presented to the council today, with such changes, insertions, or omissions as may be approved by the city manager, and whose execution of such agreement shall be conclusive evidence of such approval. That's it, sir.
That is the consent agenda. I would then approve.
Make a motion to approve, consent agenda.
Second. Number four.
Councilman Reekert?
Yes.
Councilman Chester?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange?
Yes.
Councilman Solis?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
The regular agenda today for discussion and action, item number one, Mario, the water and sewer rate study update presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I will introduce Al Short, being the director for this department, but first, I'd like to give him some accolades, because sometimes we forget our own, and he's one that we really shouldn't forget. In the last couple of months, he's been working diligently to put this study together, but in the past twenty-some-odd years, he's been working diligently to provide us with an excellent water and sewer system here, and I'm very proud to say that that water and sewer system is ready to basically increase at any point in time. We've got a new system that is repaired, replaced, up-to-date, current. We have the capacity to double the size of the input that goes into that plant, and proudly, we can say that we also have the lowest rate, with all that being said. Because it'd be easy to have the lowest rate if you had the worst system, but I think we have the best system in Bay County and at the lowest rate. So I'd like to introduce Al Short.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Council. What we're here for today is to give you an update on the city's rate system. We have with us Henry Thomas with PRMG and Murray Hamilton with PRMG. Their firm is Public Resources Management Group, they're based just north of Orlando, Maitland. They've been doing rate analysis and evaluations for the city for as long as I can remember, probably twenty years. They do a great job, and typically, these analyses are done about, on average, every five years. Sometimes you may have to speed them up a little bit, do them sooner or a little bit later. It all really depends on what's happening dynamically in the system. If you have a pretty mature system and nothing's really changing, then you can, you can stretch them out a little bit, but this particular evaluation they've done runs out about six years, just because of the capital plan that we've laid out as far as going forward. And the capital plan has changed since I initially met with a couple of the new council members and showed them there was some discussion about having the utility system fund the CRA for the roadway, not roadway portions, but the utility portions in some of the CRA projects. So we'll go back into there and have updated the capital plan so that utilities can fund that, the utility side of the CRA Segment Two, which is currently out to bid, set aside money for CRA Seventy-Nine Project, which is proposed in the future, and farther down out the window, looking at extending utilities from the new loop road all the way into the Nautilus connection point. So, so those have been added into the capital plan since you have seen it. Altogether, we're looking at about eighty-three million dollars through the evaluation period in expenditures. A lot of that is renewal and replacement, like the city manager says, as far as a lot of big lift stations. The very tail end, there is a lot of money set aside for the providing sewer service in areas that don't have it, that are environmentally sensitive. The Grand Lagoon area, south of Grand Lagoon, Long Tyler's Drive, a lot of there is on septic tanks, that water body's, you know, very important. The Laguna Beach area, also along those dune lakes, there's a lot of those, I guess I'd say probably ten percent, if any, ten percent of the people may have sewer service, the rest of them are on list, are septic tanks. So we are looking at that, but, but to do that, we typically try and get grant money to do projects, because to have the rate system pay for everybody else to get sewer, when most of you bought your homes, you paid for the cost of having sewer in doing that. So we typically try and get grant money for that. So when you see this rate evaluation going through two thousand twenty-two, there is about thirty million dollars altogether for some of those big projects out there. They're shown here, they will or will not happen if we get grant money. If we don't get any grant money, then probably the staff's not gonna recommend that we try to pursue those. We typically do fifty-fifty mix. When we did the neighborhood subdivisions, like Councilman Strange's, we, we had grant money from the state and SRF loans. We ended up paying about half the cost of that installation, and historically, for the eight subdivisions we've done, our system is funded half, and we rely on grants for the rest, so. So those are out there, those do drive up that eighty-three million dollars that you see, but the, those projects are not guaranteed, there'll be a function of what happens, you know, over the next four or five years as we pursue grant funding. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Henry, do the introduction.
Thank you, Al. Henry Thomas, Public Resources Management Group. With me today also is my associate Murray Hamilton. I'm gonna make some brief remarks, and then Murray's gonna take you through some of the details of the study he was involved in putting all these numbers together for you. So I'm gonna let him get into those with you a little bit. Some observations from the study, and as city manager said, we worked hard with Al in recent months to pull this together, and some of my observations are gonna repeat what the city manager told you earlier. First observation is within the county, you have the lowest water and sewer rates of any of the Bay County systems. Secondly, you have a very strong financial position. Unrestricted reserves are in the neighborhood of fifty million dollars. Thirdly, you have adequate cash flow. The rate increases, you're gonna see that we are gonna talk about some minor increases, are modest. On the water side, we're looking at a one percent rate increase. On the sewer side, approximately eight percent phased in over a six-year period. We're, we're looking at two alternatives for you to consider in this study. One funds the eighty-six million dollar capital plan. The other funds an additional four million dollar transfer to the general fund. So let me explain why all this is working. First of all, in your capital plan, we've got significant ongoing capital outlay for equipment, vehicles, and that, but we also have in there the ongoing renewal and replacement of the aging assets, and that's a little over two million, two-point-two million a year that's built in. There's then also, in addition, a lot of one-time projects, and that's the key to this, working the way it is, is these are not projects that recur every year. So you've got some major projects in the plan, and what we're able to do because of our cash position and the cash flow from rates, is we're able to use about twenty-five million dollars of those fifty million in reserves to phase through and pay for these one-time capital projects. What we will show is that at the end of the, the study period, we're leaving the cash balances in a strong position. The target that we shot for was two-hundred-and-seventy days of operations expense, and that's achieved at the end. And also, the systems are sustainable in that latter year. In other words, by then, we're no longer using reserves to fund the system. So the reserves are really focused on this, these one-time capital projects that are gonna occur in the, in the next few years. With that being said, I'm gonna ask Murray to come up and, and go through it with you. The, the actual alternative of transferring an additional four million dollars to the fund, it's doable, and we've actually seen that it's doable with some minor adjustments to the rate proposal. One, timing is everything, so in the, in the base case, we have the one percent water rate increase in the latter part of the, of the study period. If we want to make that additional one-time transfer, we need to move that up early, because that way we get that one percent increase, and we'll get that additional revenue over each year subsequent to that increase, rather than waiting and increasing at the end. The other is that you'll see on the sewer rates, we've got some modest annual increases over time, about one-point-six percent a year. If we want to fund an additional four million out of reserves over to the general fund for, for projects that are not utility-related, what we do is we move that one-point-six up to two, but then we drop off the last year by advancing it a little bit. Again, we're able to fund the additional four million, but over the time period, it's the same cumulative increase that we would have seen had we done the, the case without that transfer and done the one-point-sixes. So this is what you're gonna see, and again, I think your, your utility system is clearly in very good condition, and it's, it's able to fund not only the capital plan, but some growth in staffing that's needed, all within a very modest set of rate proposals. In addition to the rate funding of these projects, you do have a significant amount of projects that are funded from grants, as well as your impact fees, which is another source of revenue that you can use to fund projects. In the case of the impact fees, they have to be applied to expansion-related projects and can't be applied to all projects, but at this point, I'm gonna let Murray take you through the details.
Thank you, Henry. No, sir, I think I have it. I like to be in control. Good morning. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, again, for the record, my name is Murray Hamilton with Public Resources Management Group, and as Henry and both Mr. Short had pointed out, we've worked on updating the, the rate study. The purpose today is to give you an overview of, you know, where we've been and where we think the utility system is heading. The last rate study was completed in two thousand twelve, and it covered a four-to-five-year period also through fiscal year sixteen, and so there were three key areas that, that actually led to your strong financial position today. Number one, the system continued to have customer growth of a little bit more than one percent. Not every Florida community in, in the state can say that, that they've actually had growth within their utility systems. Secondly, your operating expenses have come under budget, so the, the operating system itself has, has been meeting its, its budget criteria. And then, thirdly, and again, this gets back to the capital plan that we've been talking about this, this time this morning, is there were a large number of the capital projects that are in today's plan that were actually scheduled for prior years, and so there's gonna be some catch-up work that's gonna be done over the next, next few years. Our forecast period is through the current year, fiscal year sixteen through twenty-two. By design, that's a six-to-seven-year forecast, it's meant to capture the total planning horizon of the capital plan. We've, we've addressed the, the annual the, the annual funding criteria for each fiscal year over the study period. Again, as Mr. Short pointed out, focusing on capital that should be funded annually from rates, primarily in the form of system renewal and replacement, and, and to, to meet the overall debt service relationships. And as Henry pointed out, we do show a, a small deficiency, certainly by the last year of the study period, and we've got some recommendations there. Regarding the current financial position, revenues today are exceeding the annual expenditures, annual expenditures being your operating expense, your annual debt service payments, principal and interest on your bonds, as well as your, your capital funded from, from rates, specifically the reinvestment in the utility system. A lot of times, folks look at that as a depreciation equivalent, if you will. But, in the very short term, the, the utility system is operating in surplus in, in terms of looking at the recurring capital needs. And, and as Henry pointed out, we've got almost eighty-seven million dollars in capital over the next six to seven years, a portion of which, twenty-five million, to be exact, is estimated to be funding, funded with reserves. Another twenty-eight million to be funded from monthly user rates over that same plan and horizon. The, the major capital projects are shown on, on slide four here, and again, as, as we pointed, pointed out, the recurring requirement are the first two bullets. We have approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per year in annual capital outlay. These are vehicles, equipment needs that typically show up in the, in the operating, sometimes operating section of the budget. We've got an additional one-point-five million dollars programmed over the forecast period, specifically for reinvestment in your infrastructure. On a percentage of revenue basis, it's about five percent of the revenues. Now, because you don't operate your own water treatment plant, the, the need on the wastewater system is greater than the water system, and you can see that there. We've got roughly three percent of the water revenues are, are being used for renewal and replacement. It's about five-hundred-thousand dollars a year. On the wastewater side, again, because you have your, your plant and transmission needs for, for wastewater, it's eight percent of the revenues, it's about a million dollars a year. So, collectively, it's roughly two-point-three million dollars that we're funding from rates on an ongoing basis, in, in order to maintain the system reliability and, and the current service levels. Some of the major projects, again, that Mr. Short highlighted are, are shown at the bottom there. Many of these are one-time projects that we're using operating reserves to, to fund in the short term. The last bullet is, is what Mr. Short was referring to in terms of Grand Lagoon and Laguna Beach, which is in the, in the last couple of years of the forecast period, fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and is highly dependent on the grant contributions in order to make those projects feasible. Slide five is, is just a high-level view of the overall funding sources. Now, this is based on implementing the proposed rates that we've outlined in this study, in order to use roughly twenty-five million from, directly from operating reserves, and twenty-eight million from existing and future revenues to help fund the capital. That's sixty percent of the capital plan coming from rates and reserves. We are using your impact fees for the system, the, the fees paid by future growth, just under sixteen million. Now, we're not completely exhausting these funds, we're gonna leave some in reserves as, as a contingency, but we are using most of what is on hand today, and the growth-related revenues over the next few years to help, again, to help fund the expansion-related portion of the capital plan. There's about six million dollars in, in existing construction fund today that will be used over this planning horizon in, in the next year or two. And then, lastly, again, as Mr. Short pointed out, we've got roughly about thirteen-point-three million in grants and other sources of income, not city-related, that's being used to help fund the capital projects. The remainder of our, our focus is, has really primarily looked at revenue and customer growth over the next six to seven years, operating expenses and the impacts of inflation, specifically your, your bulk wholesale costs from, from Bay County on the water side, debt service payments, this is the principal and interest payments on your existing debt. There's no new debt currently assumed for the forecast period, and as I'm sure staff will point out to you, the city has already tried to take as much advantage of refinancing a lot of your existing debt to take better advantage of your lower interest rates. As a matter of fact, the two thousand and nine bonds, a, as you may recall, the unfunded portion will go away over the next three to four years, but keep in mind that the remaining bonds, you'll notice that their payments also increase. So, what your, what your financial advisors, what your staff has done, is levelize that debt service payment for the long term, and, and we've got a schedule that will point to that, but, but your, your payments over time are level, if you will. And then, lastly, we'll look at the sufficiency of your current rates. Revenue assumptions, again, pointed out to you, your, your system has continued to, to add new connections to the system. From FY eleven through fifteen, on average, the city connected about three hundred accounts per year on average. Now, I will point out, it's cumulatively, it's a seven percent growth in accounts, but your water cells didn't grow, okay? People are using less water, and so your, your actual water cells have declined slightly over that same period. So, we're adding more customers, but customers, you know, properties are coming with different infrastructure in the homes, more water-conscious infrastructure, if you will. So, people are using less water. Our growth assumption going forward over the next forecast period, again, is about one, one percent per year, about three hundred units, connections per year. Miscellaneous revenues, nothing to ignore here in, in this equation, one-point-six million dollars a year in, in miscellaneous revenues. I'd like to highlight your, your reclaimed water revenue, okay? It has grown over time. The city's made an investment in that kind of, of a resource, and those revenues have grown from about three hundred thousand dollars per year to almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. So, a, a good, a good use of an alternative source of water supply, if you will. And, and I, and I would add that most likely that's what's contributed to some of the decline in your water cells, is that you, you have new customers who have access to that new resource. Operating expenses, on the water side, you know, fifty percent of the operating expense is related to your Bay County service agreement, okay? And, now, in talking with Bay County through, through city staff, no rate increase at the moment is planned for next year, in fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. Now, for the purpose of our, our forecast period, we, we know they have an indexing provision. We know that they're allowed to do up to CPI, but no more than three percent without a, without a formal bulk rate study. And so, looking at the projections of, of inflation through the Congressional Budget Office, that average is about two-point-four percent. Now, on the side here, we are talking with staff at some point, whether it's in the next year or two, or later on down in, in the horizon, whether the city needs a, a, a recovery mechanism, a true-up, if you will, to Bay County's wholesale rate, to make sure that you remain whole in, in each and every year. But, at, at the current point in time, that doesn't seem to be a, an issue at this item. But, but just understand that at some point, staff may come back with some recommendations about pass-through adjustments, to the extent that Bay County has a significant bulk water rate increase in a given year. We do, we have planned for some operating contingencies, roughly about two hundred thousand dollars per year, it's about one percent of the operating expense budget, and consistent with the budget, we do plan, plan for some uncollectible accounts that, that could occur over time. Our overall inflationary assumptions are shown in, in slide nine. Again, we've reviewed these in detail with, with city staff. We, we basically do this on a, on a by-line-item budget basis, when, when we go and we look at the inflationary pressures on the operating expenses. When you, when you look at the overall projections added together, what this is telling you is that the operating expenses on average over the next six to seven years are growing just over four percent. Now, that does include additional staff. And, in the, in the water and sewer system, we're planning on ten new positions over the six to seven years, could be phased in over time. By the last year, cumulatively, it's about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar expense, including salaries, benefits, inflation, all added together. Now, some of those positions, and I know Mr. Short can give you some more detail, you know, there's an engineer, two service workers, a cross-connection control technician, you have list station mechanics, accountants, you know, admin assistants. So, staff can provide you some more feedback in terms of when those staffing needs are coming on, but we've accounted for them over the, over the forecast period. Slide ten is just a, a summary of those expenses. Over time, again, about four percent per year on average, and that, again, that does include a one percent customer growth rate. A portion of those costs are variable, keep in mind, particularly in relation to the bulk water rate paid to Bay County. Slide eleven, again, is just a recap of the existing debt service. Again, it's going to be level for many years because of the way your financial advisors have structured your existing debt. No new debt is planned. Again, staff has taken advantage of the lower interest rates already in the market. The annual payment is roughly four-point-six million over the study period. For the water system, you can see, again, as we pointed out early in the briefing document, in the near term, to meet recurring capital needs. Again, principally, the capital outlay, the vehicles and equipment in each year, and the reinvestment in the system, the water rates are in a surplus. Now, if I went and I added in the one-time capital projects that are also being funded from reserves, the water system and the sewer system would both appear in, in, in an imbalance, not, not being balanced. But, again, in focusing on the recurring revenue needs, you can see we have a surplus in the short period of time. By the last year, we're one percent deficient, it's about a hundred and eighty-thousand dollars in that last year of the forecast period, and again, this is for the water system. On the wastewater system, a, a very minor surplus starting off, but we, we've got more needs that are coming on over the forecast period. A, a lot of this has, again, has to do with the additional personnel. Most of that new personnel costs are on the wastewater side, so they're picking up a, a greater proportion of, of the share of costs. Again, we've got the, the wastewater treatment plant to contend with. The deficiency by the last year on sewer is eight percent, or one-point-one million in that last year. And, you know, now, I, I will say, given the, given the current cash position, you could look at a number of different scenarios. You could put off any of these rate increases until the last year, and do an eight percent wastewater rate increase and a one percent water rate increase by year six or seven. The issue in that is you're gonna forfeit your cash reserve balance and most likely fall below the minimum. So, what we've been charged to do is to try and find the lowest sustainable rate in place. We've got some, some goals and considerations here. Again, starting out with, with roughly a fifty million unrestricted reserve fund balance, that's at the start of, of this current year. We're gonna use roughly twenty-five million of those operating reserves, again, over the six-to-seven-year period, while also funding another twenty-eight to twenty-nine million directly from monthly user rates, if you will. We, we do not want the minimum cash position to fall below two-hundred-and-seventy days. It's about seventy-five percent of a year's expenses for the utility system. And, again, that, that's, that's a target that we've ascribed to. It's one that the rating agencies tend, tend to look at in terms of looking at your financial strength. In, in terms of dollars, it's roughly twenty million dollars by the end of the forecast period, and with the, with the proposed rate increases, we get to that minimum, and, and so that's the minimum we don't wanna fall below. Debt service coverage compliance. It, it's a metric, it's not an issue for the city's system, primarily because we have an additional source of revenue, the public service tax, that the city gets to count towards meeting that requirement, and so that's not an issue, but again, it's something that's on our radar. Lastly, as Henry pointed out, we did look at two scenarios. We've got the base case, and again, as Mr. Short pointed out, the base case does now include the utility-related costs associated with those CRA projects, particularly that there. The alternative, again, basically, the charge was, what would the impact be if the utility system was asked to make a one-time transfer of four million dollars to the general fund? And so, we've looked at that principally as the alternative. Now, I will say this, and, and as Henry pointed out, to fund the four million dollars, we tried to do it under the, the, the situation to not create any additional rate increase over the six-to-seven-year forecast. So, as Henry pointed out, our goal was to achieve the same revenue by the last year of the study period. So, on slide fifteen is, is a summary of, of the proposed cases. Again, the base case targets everything in the plan that you've seen up to this point, with the exception of a four million dollar transfer to the, to the general fund. You would need a, a one percent rate increase by the last year on the water system. It would produce about a hundred and eighty-thousand dollars in, in revenue. For the wastewater system, we don't wanna wait till the end. So, we'd rather have a, a level adjustments over time, about one-point-six. Well, first of all, no rate increases proposed for FY seventeen, so we're not looking for any action for next year. This is, all of these consider rates for fiscal year eighteen. In fiscal year eighteen, we would look at a one-point-six percent sewer rate increase in each year over the five years. Cumulatively, it's eight-point-three percent, so that, that's our, that's our deficiency. Both systems would be at a break-even position by that last year. The ca, the unrestricted cash reserve balance under the base case would be about three hundred days of operating expenses, so slightly above the two-hundred-and-seventy minimum. Now, when we went to look at the alternative, and the only change we made in the alternative is in fiscal year seventeen, we made, again, that one-time transfer of four million dollars. What that does is it immediately takes that cash reserve fund balance below the three hundred days, well below the two-seventy, okay? And so, what we looked is, we said, okay, well, without creating more revenue, how can we recoup that cash reserve fund balance? And as Henry pointed out, we basically focused on the timing of the increases, not the, not, not the amount specifically. So, we advanced the, the water rate increase to fiscal year eighteen, so we advanced it by roughly four to five years, one percent. And then, for the wastewater system, we shortened the horizon of the increases to a four-year period, from one-point-six percent per year over five years to two percent over four. You can see we get to the same cumulative total. The difference is we're collecting those dollars earlier in the forecast period, over time, to replenish the reserve fund balance. We don't get back to three hundred days, we get back to the minimum, which is right around two-hundred-and-seventy days of reserves. Now, one of the items that Henry and I looked at, kind of off the board, if you will, is if the city elected to do something more than four million dollars, how would that impact these two cases here? And, and what we figured out was, is for every million-dollar increase above the four million, it would require a point-seven percent water and wastewater rate increase. It's a one, it's a one-time increase. So, in that example, if the alternative was, was meant to be adopted, and the city transferred five million dollars instead of four, you would need a one-point-seven percent increase in water in two thousand and eighteen, and a two-point-seven percent increase in sewer in eighteen, and then the two percenters would hold for the remainder of the forecast period. So, for every million dollars, it's a one-time point-seven percent adjustment. Now, what does that point-seven percent mean? It's about almost forty cents per customer bill per month, and, and so, and then that, that adjustment would need to be held for at least the five-to-six-year period in order to make those reserve fund balances up. So, again, as far as the alternative goes, we found a way to fund four million dollars without creating a new rate increase, but the cost is advancing the rate, the rate adjustments sooner in the, in the detail. This is the current rate comparison. So, the city's current rates, I did not put the FY eighteen rates on here on purpose, because everybody else's rates here are, are their current rates. I, I will give those to you, but, one, I, I'd like to point out that forty-three percent of your customers are water-only. So, so out of the customer class, under, under either of these scenarios, forty-three percent of your customers are looking at a one percent rate increase. The, the remaining customers have both water and sewer, and in the first year, they would have about a one-and-a-half percent rate increase, because the, the bill's almost equal in, in terms of the, the, the six-thousand-gallon bill. In the subsequent years, where we're doing sewer-only rate increases, forty-three percent of your customers would see no rate increase, because they have water-only. For those that have combined service, they'd have roughly a one percent rate increase in terms of their total bill. So, those are some good things to, to, to look at. If I had the FY eighteen rates on here, which again, would be a one, under the alternative, which would be a one percent water rate increase, or a twenty-six cent month increase, and which would be a one percent water rate increase or a 26 cent month increase, and then the wastewater increase of 2%, that bill would be $54.02. It's a 78 cent increase over the current bill, about one and a half percent. And so again, still well below the others in Bay County. And we have a feeling that, you know, many of these are, are in the same kind of cycle, and they're reviewing the adequacy of their rates as well. The next couple of slides just show you, you know, that we get to the targets when we input the rates. Again, this is based on the alternative. The base case would look fair, fairly similar, except the rate increase was programmed for the last year. But you can see we're at a break-even. On the wastewater side, again, getting there over time, by the last year, fiscal year '22, break-even cash flows. And then this is what it looks like on a combined system. Again, we, we've got the slides in here, slide 20 and I think 21, in relation to your debt service coverage. You're well above the minimum requirements. Again, a lot of that has to do with the public service tax revenues that are, that are counted towards your ability to meet that covenant requirement. Slide 22 is, is the projection of the year-ended cash balances over time, over the study period. And so we're, we're going from roughly 61 and a half million, which is our estimated balance at the end of this current fiscal year, at, at the end of September, to roughly 23.1 million by the end of the six to seven-year forecast. We've got the operating reserve funds really to 268 days. It's so close to the minimum, you know, we didn't want to argue that point. But that's basically where we're at in terms of your operating reserve balance. Again, a, a strong metric that the lending community is going to look at in case you do have to go out for bonds again. Lastly, a summary of our conclusions and recommendations, again, for the, for the study period. No rate increases proposed for fiscal year '17 on the, on the water or sewer side. Again, i- if the city elected to do something next year, it would just help to prop up those cash reserve balances by the, the end of the forecast period. But we're not seeing, seeing the, the need in the short term. Again, you know, principally, it's the new personnel costs, the inflationary pressures on O and M that, that are really driving the one percent water rate increase and the 2% sewer rate increases. Those are some, some driving factors there, because again, the capital is principally covered from our, our reserve fund, i- is, is what we're doing. And again, we are making a reinvestment in the system of roughly $2.3 million per year on average. Again, we looked at the alternative to transfer up to $4 million to the general fund. We see that that's feasible, given the timing of those alternative rate increases. And again, we, the city should continue to, to look at updating the study, particularly within the next two to three years, as these projects take better shape over time. And with that, we'd be happy to, to try and address any questions or comments you have.
I'd just like to clarify a couple of points.
Sure.
The most striking thing to me, when you look at it, is the rate study that's there. And based on my calculations, it looks like, compared to the average of neighboring communities, their rates are 85% higher than ours. Let me take the fact that our average is 53.24, and the neighbors' averages are at 97.95. That's basically 85% higher than our rates than we have. And that's the average. We're not talking about the high rates, which are about 120% higher than what we have here. So obviously, we're very blessed with the, with what the city has done and with what our wastewater department has done and to manage everything and do it responsibly, as well as get these rates for the citizens that are, to me, are just incredible. And as we hear all the different neighboring communities, we hear about how they're struggling with the cost of these areas. So I can't help but think that what we have there is, is great. Very happy to see that, that Al City Manager decided to go ahead and move in those areas that we were talking about as far as the CRA and those extensions. To me, those are going to be crucial to where the city's going here in the future. And by doing that, it, it's going to help us. And, and one of the ways that I think that, that's most important about when you're extending to the Grand Lagoon area, extending out to the west, one of the things we're not talking about enough is the actual runoff that we're getting, that's created by the septic systems that go into the Gulf of Mexico. If you hear people over and over, you'll find out, and people will start to say, that our algae blooms seem to be sometimes increasing more and more out in the Gulf. The June grass, it's a longer season. It's more, those of you that've been here for a long time, I haven't, but I hear those stories from everybody about how it seems like we're getting more and more algae. It's a direct result of that, of those systems that are pouring out. I would hope that somehow we can incorporate, when we do get those sewer systems extended out, that we work on a way to go ahead and, and try and get some grants or things to help people hook up to those systems. I know as I, I walk the neighborhoods, one of the problems in some of the communities where we put the sewer in, was the fact that some of our fixed income people can't afford to hook up to the sewer, I mean, to the sewer system. So we have a system in place, but they can't afford. So it'd be great, as a city, if we could work on either payment plans or see if there's grants out there. And I think those things may be coming after the fiasco that they're having right now in the Port St. Lucie area, with all the algae that's going on in their, in their areas over there with the inlets, based on, on a lot of the chemicals and sewers that have gone in there to create a very toxic algae. So I applaud you all for putting that in the study, because I think it's going to be very crucial that we extend sewer to as many areas, but more important than that is to actually hook people up to those sewers, so that we get the benefit, not because they're on the sewer, but for future environmental cause to the Gulf of Mexico. To me, it makes complete sense that, as we're looking at this, that I definitely like what was in the, the base study rate. It's very reasonable to be able to go ahead and just have a 1.6 increase, starting in 2018, over the year versus doing one of those in six years, eight percent increase. So I like the, the different things that you've placed in there to, to address that and make it a responsible increment, instead of something that, that would, would cost people, all of a sudden, an eight or 10% increase, four or five years down the line. It's a responsible thing to do. But I think it's a great presentation, and once again, kudos to, to our department for the hard work they've done and to make everything work as well as it does here.
Anybody else?
I have one question on the comparison of rates. Let's say for like the City of Panama City, or, yeah, the City of Panama City has garbage pickup. Is that included in?
No, ma'am. These, these, these are only the water and sewer rates. And quite frankly, for the City of Panama City, we, we actually completed a study for them earlier this year in January. And so again, a- as we mentioned, some of these cities are going to be raising rates over time. Panama City has, has roughly about a 3% rate increase over the next five years, also that will start next year.
Is that the rate?
Assuming, assuming they're adopted.
Is that the rate increase that they approved Monday?
Yes. Well, I wasn't part of that meeting.
Okay.
If they, if they adopted one, that, that would probably be it.
I didn't know if that was your recommendation or if that was.
It would have been. We, we last met with them in January.
Okay.
So assuming it was adopted, yes, sir.
It was. Okay.
I will add a little bit. I'm being a good man. I'm letting y'all speak first, and then I'll cover that call with BS.
Paid on, on your slide, on your slide seven, Mr. Hamilton.
Yes, sir.
They projected miscellaneous revenue. It shows interest income. What would we get interest income from?
Well, the, the, as a good steward, the, the funds are invested based on the city's investment program, okay?
The reserve funds are drawing, that's where the interest shows up.
That, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And now, it's minimal in this economic environment, but, but yes, there is some there. And so, again, we, we've tried to look at all other sources of income before looking at the monthly user rates and to the extent that they have to increase.
What, and Grand Lagoon, we got some forfeitures of fines from airport problems way back, and, and were able to put in some sewer lines there. Are there readily available grants these days for such projects? I guess maybe I'm asking Mr. Short that question, because I haven't heard a whole lot about grants for such.
Well, actually, we were competing with Kelly for some BP money, and her project got rated a little higher for the stormwater outfalls on the beach. So we did apply for her grant money on that, but did not get it. We understand there's more coming down.
Did Kelly get it?
I don't know if she's got it.
Ranked higher.
Yeah.
It's all right if one of you got it, right?
But we are looking for options and opportunities every time we, we can. It's just that, in, in that project, the, the airport fine money, we kicked in a little more than half of the total count of that job. And we, we try and get a balance there. It's like a cost sharing. We'll, we'll, we'll go in half if somebody else will come up with half.
What would you, what would you say, please, sir, that compared to five to seven years ago, the availability of grants for your category are more or less the same?
It fluctuates every year. Right now, you know, I think the Water Management District may have some, some money available out there for different things. So it just, just depends on what we can do. The other option, and what made us a little slow going outside the city limits, is that these projects, we have to rebuild the roads as part of doing these projects.
Right.
And that is a huge portion of the cost of putting in these sewer systems. So it was okay in the city limits to do it, you know, and, and build a new road, because, you know, our public works people have the benefit of the new road. The county has the benefit of a road, and, and that is 30, 35% of the cost of the project sometimes to do that. So in, in this particular case, like, we're doing Bayside project now. Bay County did contribute half a million dollars towards that. So again, that's another, also a way to help maybe fund this, is if we get to that point where this council can get the county commission to help as well, that makes all these projects a little more feasible for everybody.
Al, while, while you're still there, one of the questions that Hector brought up, I think we have an answer to, and that is, when you do extend a system, we do have a system for financing for people to do the hookup, but it's incentivized for them to do it early on, if you'll explain that a little bit.
That was, that was a, a, a kind of a tough, tough call, because when we first started these projects in early 2000, and we did open sands and ended up going from there, the, the council at the time had, had to make a choice. The, the, the way the grants are worded and the law is, once that sewer is available, you're supposed to require them to hook up within 12 months. Well, at the, at the time, the thought process, well, if we, if we do this, no one's going to, going to want the project. If we go on there and say, you will hook up and you will pay, because just like Councilman Sully said.
There's nobody will reboot.
They're, they're on fixed, they're on fixed incomes, you know, that they don't necessarily have the money to spend another $3,000 or $4,000 to hook on, and that can be over and above the impact fee we're going to charge. So we tried to do an incentive program. As soon as it's available, we send out our notice, we give them 90 days, said, we'll let you finance your impact fee over time. And then, as long as your septic tank is functioning properly, then you can go ahead and hook up, you know, when, when you, when you basically, if your tank starts to have a problem, the health department will not give you a permit to fix it, and you'll have to hook up then. So we thought we'd let people who had invested their money in a septic system that still functioned, they would go ahead and hook up when that system no longer worked properly. And we would at least, if they're working properly, they do a decent job, they obviously do not do as good of a job as a municipal system. I mean, and there is a long-term impact. I think it's pretty clear to everybody, if you're near a body of water and you have a lot of septic tanks, that long-term is not a good environmental situation. So that's why we've tried to at least start, in, in the council, prior to some of, some of you being elected, we also had directions to start acquiring properties in some of these areas, the Grand Lagoon, Laguna Beach area, to get the lift stations. Because once, we obviously want to be in the lowest, worst lot in subdivision, because the water's going to be going downhill. But, but if anybody builds there before we get there, on some of these areas, we have to find the, the nearest, closest thing. So we can't wait till they're built out, because then it makes it very tough to put these projects in. So we are actively looking for properties to acquire, to start having lift station sites to, for planning ahead, to where we do either get some grant money or come up with some funding. And if the county can help out, you know, all these things will, will help us get these projects built. But I think they're environmentally critical to, for us to do long-term.
But that leak, that leak of sewer that you installed two or three years ago in the Grand Lagoon area, you know, it's pretty.
That's served about 100 homes.
But, but they were not required to hook on?
No, sir, but we had, in most, all these areas, you, you have, we have probably, I haven't checked it in the last six months or so, but a year ago, we had about 30% of those people had connected already.
30%.
And all new homes would be required to connect?
Right, right.
So it's, it's also, it spurs revitalization.
Right. Phil, he just, actually just answered one of my questions about new homes connecting. Do they have to? Okay. Forty, Mr. Hamilton mentioned 43% is water-only. Explain that.
Well, most of those people live outside the city limits. They're out on the fringes, over on the east end, on the west end, and they use septic tanks. But because of the seven projects we did in the city, we have gotten most of. There are still a few areas over off Wells and San Sushi, there are still some of those people who are on septic that are in city limits. But for the most part, we, we do have the ability to get sewers people in city limits.
Gotcha. Okay.
I will tell you, one of the reasons the city and the county gets very few grants is because they don't require a hookup. That is a prerequisite. A lot of the grants that are out there, if you get, if the environmental group is going to put money into it, they won't you trust the citizens to hook up. And I know for a fact, the one you lost here, and the two we lost in the county for the same area, was strictly because they weren't mandated to hook up. And that's, that's something that the council, you have to make up your mind what you want to do. I, I, I know back years ago, we had in there, we started the paperwork when I was here before to move into these cities. And I think it was six months you had to be hooked up. You had to be hooked up in a year. If you got hooked up in the first six months, you got like half off or something. And then, then you council changed that. And there's still probably 50% in my neighborhood that haven't hooked up. And so you're not realizing the revenue you should be, plus you're not realizing the benefit of the reason you didn't start. If you're going, if you're going to put in sewer, you need to have people hook up. Then, and Al talking about the, the fact that he didn't go in and put it in the outline areas because of the expense it would incur on the city. Having been with the county, I will tell you, the city has the best water and sewer system anywhere in the county. The county has done very good with their water stuff and, but some of the areas that were supposed to be developed, there's up near Cherokee Heights, y'all have seen that in the news forever, where they pay horrible rents. Developers in those areas came in and asked the county to put stuff in. And, and you kind of like gambling, they were betting on the gum, and it didn't happen. And so those people are getting stuff with a significant bill up there. Their, their, their rates are like 170% more than anything else. It's pretty significant. And that's why the city's been careful about money.
Mayor, also the, we do have part of our incentive program is, once that sewer's available, and the 90 days that they don't either pay the impact fee or, or hook up, we do charge an availability charge.
Yep.
If you're, if it's out there in front of your house and you are not hooked up to it, even if you have a septic tank, you will get charged availability charge. And it's in the range of about $12 a month. So it's also part of the incentive program to begin. And when they do hook up, they don't notice that big of a change in their bill, because they're already paying part of it anyways.
When I, two questions I had. The reuse, when he was talking about the water consumption being down, I was thinking about the reuse before we said it. And I was wondering, do you have a, in those areas, our reuse consumption, you know, does it bring it up pretty close? Or is water truly that, 300 units a year additionally?
Well, we had a lot of redevelopments along Front Beach Road during the boom period, and a lot of very inefficient buildings have been replaced with much more contemporary, efficient buildings. So, so that's helping drive the overall numbers. And we've been, you know, obviously, working on leak control and stuff like that. You know, every system, no system, we have over 300 miles of water pipe out there. You know, there's every little bit of a leak is water that, that you lose that's not going to a customer. So as we basically address all of those, everything goes towards making the system a little bit more efficient and a little bit tighter. The reclaimed water, historically, we used to see about 15 to 20% of the water consumption was going towards irrigation. So whenever these new subdivisions, Breakfast Point, everywhere that has reclaimed water available, that's decreasing the growth rate in our water use out there.
Okay. The other one, I know the county has built-in escalators. Why do we not go ahead and put those in? I, I, we have a very good fund, a very secure, for a reason. And, and we compensate every time they go up, you have to go up some. Why don't, why don't we have that built in as an automatic enhancer? You know, it's kind of.
Well, in, in the projections, we do have the CPI increase factored in. So in the, in the revenue requirements that we base the rates on, we've anticipated that increase from Bay County from 2018 to 2020. from Bay County from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, at the CPI rate, which they can do without a study, and what they've been doing historically. So we have captured it in the rate plan. The question becomes, do we want a mechanism that exactly tracks it? And the issue right now is that the water system's in surplus, so if Bay County increases their rates more than two point four percent, what, we would be short for that year, but right now, the water system is in surplus, so we didn't see the need yet to try to get, uh, this is a, a long-term sustainability argument, and it's a, and it's a smart, but-
I understood that part of it.
Right.
I understood you were capturing what they were gonna do, but to make sure we have a surplus, and to make sure that we stay as viable of, of, of utility as we are, I would think it would make sense to have one. If we're gonna get charged an extra point six this year, they'll automatically go in there to keep these numbers the same, so we don't have to pay for some of these stays.
A- and what we can do, what the plan is, is we're gonna be working out a formulaic approach with staff, and before you have to adopt those eighteen rates, we'll have a proposal relative to that for you to consider. Panama City, by the way, adopted a similar clause in their rates.
Panama City depends an awful lot on Bay County's water.
Yes, they do.
For their pressure for everything, so they're, if they redo, they're gonna have some significant expense, and there's folks that don't have it, I don't wanna get caught short with.
And, and those water tanks that we have have saved our service several times, where Panama City doesn't have those water tanks, they just, they just work off the pressure.
And they're getting ready to have a significant increase, because the increase they passed on Monday, quote, "did not include any increase in water costs from the county."
I think they did say fast on Monday, we just sewer to redo that station on twenty-third.
It was significant, I forgot what it was, but I was shocked it was that much, and it didn't include any increase in water prices from the county.
They're older than we are, and I can tell you, you'll spend more money on maintenance the older you get. They don't know anything about that.
No.
Mayor, this question's probably more to the council to see if maybe we, we could support this. Once again, and it happened to be in your neighborhood, where I ran across three people that were fixed income, struggling with the, the fact that they missed that opportunity to tap in, they don't have the money to tap into the sewer system. Would you all be amenable to, to the city coming up with a plan possibly to reopen up a finance period for those that have been placed back? And I know it's additional work for our city, uh, the accounting wise and everything, but even if it's just ten or fifteen people that take advantage, that would like to join the sewer but need to do it on a, on a payment plan because of their fixed income, I think it would be nice to open that back up, whether we maybe target certain neighborhoods where the sewer's at, that we have the least participation. Like you said, in your neighborhood, about fifty percent that aren't, you know, target that neighborhood, open that up and see if we have people that might wanna come on if we send a letter, and we're willing to finance that for them due to the fact they're on fixed incomes. I think it's a win-win situation, it helps them out if they don't have the funds to be able to tap in, and, you know, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, a lot of them, oh, my septic system's fine, I don't have a problem. Three, four years later, they're realizing, I need to be on the sewer, but I can't afford it. Uh, so I'd just like to see if there's support on the council for us to maybe open that up to some of those areas under a payment plan, so we can bring more people on, it makes the system more effective, it's gonna help us in the future. Like I said, the, the one thing we're not looking at here is the future problems we're gonna have, with everything that goes into the Gulf, that's, that's running through septic systems, and so if we can have people go on-
I think we're all looking at that, yeah. I think everybody's aware, we've been working on trying to get sewer in those in, with the county for a year, and, and, and it's strictly a financial need. You have to, you have to have the votes on whichever board you're sitting on to say you gotta hook up, or you will not get a grant.
No, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to go with it. What I'm trying to say is, are we willing as a council to allow our city to allow people to do a payment plan?
I understand, but to say nobody's looking at it yet is incorrect. It's been looked at, I've met with that, we've got drawings six or eight years back to get out in these areas, it is, it has been an ongoing problem, and it, the main problem is money. And the main problem is somebody not wanting you to tell them what to do. And my septic paint works legally, and, uh, I agree, and I think there's money in our, in our utility fund to come up with payment plans, short-term payment plans, five-year deals, to where we don't put the fund in jeopardy, and, and I don't think anybody has a problem with doing that, but, but we've got to expect something, I think, to do it too. I mean, it, it is important, and it, and it's important that they hook up.
So is it okay that we give the city, I mean, do we have a consensus here to, to come back with a plan for it?
If I can get Holly to give you a brief explanation of what it takes to do that.
We have something already, I think.
Yes.
We, we did, we had a sixty-month plan, so within a certain time period after Al's people put the sewer into the neighborhood, they had so many days they could hook up, and we would finance it over sixty months. At the time, it was at five percent, which was a favorable rate. Um, what we found with the last neighborhood was five percent wasn't, no longer so favorable, because rates in general in the market had come down considerably since then, so where, when we started out, that five percent was to try to help, um, by the end of the time period, it really wasn't a benefit so much. The other issue is, we do put a lien on their homes with that note, and some people don't want a lien on their homes, so even though you make the financing available to them-
But it's the same as a loan, a loan does the same thing.
Right, it basi-
But the lien only happens if they don't pay, you're talking about default.
Correct, that's correct, but, but to sign, they sign that note, and it is a lien on the home. So when they default, if there is a default, which we did have some during the economic downturn, we had recourse, um, when the next person bought the home, they had to, to pay that lien off, basically, or if the bank paid it off, in some cases, Amy's got a better feel, we did not have that many of them, and of course, once the knowns pay, once the, the loan is paid off, the lien goes away, just like any other mortgage on a, on a piece of property. Um, so we could certainly look at doing it. Our system, our accounting system is not a financial system, so we have to do a little bit of gyrations to make it work, but it's doable.
And we would want to do it as a system, because to do it one at a time becomes an accounting nightmare, but if we open it up to lull water and to Grand Lagoon and places like that, it can be done, because now we start off at this point and it ends at this point, but to start, and to start, and to start becomes unmanageable.
Yeah, given open period.
And it is basically a loan.
Sure.
Good, we'll come back to it.
Anybody else have any questions of the presenters, or Al? All right. Um-
Thank you.
I assume there's no motion to be made, we just accept it, is that correct? Or do we need to make the motion that this, uh-
A transfer?
Study, that we move this study into effect?
Well, there were two versions of the study, one with a transfer and one without a transfer. Is there a direction there?
Well, I, me personally, we asked for the, for you to include the, the study on the transfer, and that based on several things. The main thing is, and, and I know everybody's tired of hearing this, but it's a wonderful thing to have happen, we don't have a level of that. And because the administration does work with utilities, it is acceptable for transfers from utilities to general funds at times. You don't wanna, I know some places do it, but I don't think this city has ever or should ever go to use a, a utility as a cash generator. It, it, that should never happen, and I hope it doesn't. But we do have some extra money, and we are fixing to do phase three of the CRA upfront, and while this area for the last year and a half has looked horrible, this transfer gives us the opportunity to fix this corner. And while we're waiting on the fire department to make some decisions about things, I would like to see this, the alternative part of this study put into effect, so we can continue the construction on this corner and finish it, hopefully by the same time we get this road foot. When you come into the city, we'll look at it.
Your honor, I'm a little confused on that, there's, there's, the two studies they had is the base and the alternative, the proposed alternative.
Right.
Uh, so you're, you're going for the proposed alternative.
Yeah.
Does the CRA, is that not in the base case?
The sheet, the sheet, the utility, the utility portion of the expenses for the CRA are in the base case.
And, and not only that, the, the Loop Road addition, uh, down to Nautilus, there's several things, there's about four million in one side of it, and four million in the transfer to the general fund. That other four million, the CRA part would never transfer.
Right, no, I understand, what I'm saying is, those increases for the transfer of those areas, are they in the base case study and the proposed alternative?
The, the, the line relocations are specifically in the base case, they are also included in the alternative, because the alternative is the base case plus a four million dollar transfer to the general fund for non-utility.
But that money, that other money, that first four would never transfer, it stays in utilities, is used in the CRA and the Loop Road.
Then I agree with you, I, I like the proposed alternative scenario.
I'd make a motion that we accept the proposed alternative scenario as, as outlined.
Okay, Madam Clerk, hello, that's all, any discussion?
We're ready. Councilman Rickert?
Yes.
Councilman Chester?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange?
Yes.
Councilman Solis?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Uh, item number two, pension boards and civil service board appointments. No, I mean, Marla.
Um, Mayor, thank you. What we basically have is, we have terms that people are, are going through, and we have one person within the civil service board, which we would be responsible for appointing, and we're just looking for direction from council, would you like for us to advertise for that? And then on the pension board side, um, there are no term limits, and we do have members that are currently in, that their term is coming up, and propose to advertise for that or to just reappoint for, for the pension board. So those two directions for me.
I think we should advertise.
Okay.
Yes, both of them.
Both of them.
And, and if we could get to where we have a full application of those that are applying for positions, so we can see a-
Certainly.
A, a more in-depth background on those that are applying for positions.
Well, that's for resume, and, and we have added that to, to these positions.
And we don't need, uh, just direction?
Just direction.
Is that, now, the, the, one of those boards has the police appoint someone that's a, which, so, we're not advertising for those, are we? I mean, the police department-
We're advertising that in-house, so that people know that they can, you know, go for it, but we're not advertising to the world. It's, it'll just be on our website, and it'll, it'll work, you know, word of mouth internally that those seats are up-
We won't waste somebody, some civilians' time-
No, those, those are, those are in-house, I mean, those don't think have an option to be-
The way that probably works is the old timers, Paul and John, these guys that are fixed or retired, get on there and jack it up high as they can right before they leave.
I see.
And I would like to give accolades to the, the Pauls and, and the, and the police chief and, and Holly, because our pension plan by far is better than most of the state of Florida, by the way, not just Bay County, but the state of Florida.
Better than mine.
And that's due to good investments.
It's a good return for their employees, they, they get a good deal.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, item number three, Gulf Power franchise, I would like to press a pause. I, yesterday at our, uh, code enforcement meeting, we talked about some of the problems with the utility boats, and I'm not talking about Gulf Power, I'm talking about Gulf Power and other hangers on those boats. Uh, while we're trying to figure out how to straighten this out, I think it would be foolish for us to sign an agreement that already had maybe problems that are with these things. I, I would like to try to get a meeting together with the people that are utilizing boats, all the capital, uh, and Gulf Power, and get everybody to sit down together, and let's see what we can do to clean it up. And I, and I think, I would like for us to wait until we have some success before we start signing like a agreement.
I think that's a good idea with this. Nobody wants a rate increase, nobody wants to, you know, I mean-
There is no rate increase in this, probably.
I know, but it's the franchise fee, and the city fee, and the blah 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 fee, and all that kind of stuff, so it, maybe the power company has to sweat a little bit, um, as far as, you know, maybe putting up the, the facilities underground, that's what you're talking about, going from area to underground.
They will never, they will never go underground if we don't pay for it.
Right.
But we can force a handle.
That underground's a, underground's a five-to-one ratio, it last time was involved in one of those.
I think, and, and Gulf Power says they're hamstrung with what they can do with these other utilities, but, um, I think we need to know exactly what our options are before we do anything.
My only question is, what, is, is there any, any negative to not having, obviously we've been, it's been expired since March of two thousand sixteen, are there any negative repercussions by not having this agreement in place while we review it or?
We have a right-of-way, um, regulation ordinance that I would serve as a stop-gat and require a permit. Um, I think Gulf, Gulf Power is still operating as if the franchise were in effect, um, so if you are going to pull it, we are going to renegotiate it, and they had already offered, we'd like to renegotiate it, but we'd like to use this as a placeholder while we do that renegotiation. Um, we should probably reach out to them and get a permit in lieu of this franchise until we get that new franchise in place.
And I, it, I just have a hard time when you're telling somebody to clean up something that looks bad to the neighbors, when you ride by some of these poles and there's numbers of lines just hanging. I, I, everybody's gonna have to do a little something, and I, I, they may be, have their hands tied with what they can do with the cables of different kinds, but maybe we're not, maybe we all, but I would, I would like to, let's have a, if you're looking at it.
All right, item number four, changing of meeting times, reading first reading. Mario.
I'll defer to-
Well, city staff has already implemented your desire to go to nine AM meetings, you do have a city code provision that actually codifies when your meeting dates and times are, um, so to make your intent consistent with the city code, this is an ordinance for first reading, um, that provides, in the code, codifies your intent that the regular meetings will be on the second, or Thursdays, at nine AM. An ordinance of the City of Panama City Beach, amending the city's code of ordinances relating to meeting times of the city council, revising the meeting schedule to provide for regular meetings of the council to begin at nine AM, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, providing for codification and providing an immediately effective date.
This is open for discussion or motion?
Does that affect, uh, modification we did about two years ago about holidays, when, you know, our meeting, it does not?
It's the same section, it doesn't change your ability to still counsel or reschedule.
There was no mention of times in that change.
Right.
There was no-
We modified the section to give you the flexibility to just cancel straight out or to reschedule those November and December meetings, this doesn't affect that.
Thank you.
I would just like to point out once again, uh, my opposition to this, I, I feel that we need to have one meeting that's in the evening that allows people to be able to go in and attend the meetings. Uh, I understand that people will make attempts to come when they can, but there are a large percentage of people that work, and it is extremely difficult to come to a nine o'clock morning meeting, and, and even if they can make it, that doesn't mean that they're not being penalized by losing pay of having to miss that meeting, uh, not all employers just grant time to people, so, uh, once again, just, uh, I wanna put it out there, that I feel that, uh, I don't mind having one meeting at nine AM, but, uh, I would like to see us still have at least one late meeting, uh, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Anybody? I would say, together, make a motion that we move meeting times to nine o'clock.
Second. And I didn't know you were looking for a motion, sir, this, or I would have been glad to make-
I said conversation and motion, so I figured we'd get at it.
All right, thank you. Second to motion. Stranger in charge.
Isn't that strange?
I'm taking my time. Ask the county for that. I guess we need to do a little-
I withdraw my motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept as written ordinance thirteen ninety-three. Please, ma'am, this is-
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, to call the rules.
Councilman Rickert?
Yes.
Councilman Chester?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange?
No.
Councilman Solis?
No.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. Item number five, we have a TECO gas franchise. Mario.
Mayor, um, a couple of years back, we brought this to the council, uh, I believe all of the other municipalities, including the county, in their franchise fees are at six percent. This was actually brought up to me by a TECO representative and said, if the city was, wanted to take that up to the six percent to match what everybody else pays, uh- and said, if the city was, wanted to take that up to the six percent to match what everybody else pays within Bay County, we can do it at any point in time. I believe our current agreement allows it to change, you know, without an anniversary or anything like that. So I just wanted to bring it back to a new council to see if they would consider it. It is not a large dollar figure, but keep in mind, every little bit does help. When we're trying to add police officers and we're trying to add firefighters, you know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars makes a difference. And that's about all that this would, you know, would bring in additional income to the city. It's that level of money. It's not a six-figure level. So by the time you spread it out to all of our gas customers, it's not something that they're gonna see that impacts them, but it is something that makes a difference to the city. So I just wanted to give you guys the opportunity to consider it.
Any comments? Like I said, and all the different municipalities in our area all are at a six-percent franchise. Once again, I think, as the mayor said, we're extremely blessed in the fact that we don't have an ad lorm here in Panama City Beach, and I think that's everybody's goal, to make sure we never have to have an ad lorm here. So the city basically operates, I believe fifty percent of our budget is off of our one percent. The other fifty percent does come in from franchise fees, from the money that comes back in from the state. And we have a limited budget. We'll be discussing more budget today and looking at bringing on additional police officers, additional fire departments. And without an ad lorm, which is great not to have, we do need to make sure we're maximizing in the areas that are just in other areas. So we're blessed in the fact that, like I said, you know, compared to some of the areas, our water and sewer bills are almost half the price as the surrounding areas. It is a small group. I don't have a problem with moving that franchise fee from three to six percent.
Is that a motion, Mr. Luke?
I'll make a motion that we accept that.
Mario, how much did you say we were getting?
I don't, I don't see Holly. I think that the franchise fee was somewhere around sixty, sixty-seven thousand dollars. But the complication is, you know, there are some minimums that you don't pay that percentage on. It's over that minimum that you start to pay, so the number would really fluctuate based on the usage. So I can't give you a hard number, but it will make a difference.
And everybody right outside the city limits pays that, correct? Or is this for the whole beach?
This is strictly city limits.
That's what I'm saying, but I'm saying, on that side of Joan Avenue, on this side over here, everybody else is already paying that. We're the only ones not.
One second.
Second to the motion.
Yes.
And the motion, I'm sorry, I missed it, sir.
The motion was to increase from three percent to six percent for TECO gas franchise.
I would second that, sir.
Councilman Reekert?
Yes.
Councilman Chester?
Yes.
Councilwoman Strange?
Yes.
Councilman Solis?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. This is the section we have to further comment. If anybody would like to speak before we come today. We have three minutes. I'll have to give you name, address, and three minutes. Do you have any?
Just Bernie, sir.
Okay.
Bernie Thompson, eighty-three seventeen Front Beach Road. And Councilman Hector Solis, I'd like to thank you for asking to keep at least one meeting when people can make it. And Vice Mayor Strange, I want to say that what you just did with the gavel, passing it back, is the best example of leadership that I've seen since the Thomas regime. And Mr. Mayor, coming to you. Yesterday, when I asked you about your diner and why people are able to park in the right-of-way and extending into the road, and why your sign has a missing word, and why you're not following the rules, you said you actually are following the rules, because you've been grandfathered in, and you're living under laws that are thirty years old from nineteen eighty-six, while requiring the rest of us to live under the current rules. And I understand that might be legal, but it's not right, Mr. Mayor. Having a sign without the word cafe in it is janky. Makes us all look bad. When people drive by, it makes Panama City look bad. When you've got cars parked in the right-of-way, your customers, and cars have to drive around that car on your road, that parking space is janky. It makes Panama City look bad. When you have a handicap parking slot that's in the right-of-way, it's janky, sir. It makes Panama City look bad. And I'm asking you, even though you fall under the law, the nineteen eighty-six law that allows Mike's diner to look janky, will you please lead by example and operate just like you're gonna make everybody else? And the last request I have is your cup there where you advertise Mike's diner. That's called product placement, right there by the people's gavel, and it's wrong. And I'm gonna ask you if you'd remove it during government meetings. These are government meetings, not business meetings. And if not, I'll request if I could also put an item up there for product placement to advertise my business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jacob Laster, and I'm a Bay County resident. Go through a few of the cities and their meeting times. Callaway, six p.m. Parker, five-thirty p.m. Lynn Haven, four and six p.m. Mexico Beach, six p.m. Springfield, six p.m. County, nine a.m. And Panama City, eight a.m. Seems like the municipalities that, you know, are making the most money, spending the most money, and affect the citizens of Bay County the most, seem to not want the citizens of Bay County to be there. I mean, you can tell by the turnout, last few meetings have been a lot more packed than this. I think it's a bad decision, and it kind of proves to me that you don't want the dissent, because you've already moved the meeting to nine before the resolution technically passed. And I'd also like to piggyback on what Mr. Thompson said a little bit. Yesterday at that code enforcement meeting, you said, you get a ticket, bring a citation. If it's a bad law, we'll change it. Later on, while talking about your own business and parking in the right-of-way, you said, it may be a bad law, but I'm grandfathered. Shouldn't you lead by example, since you have been the most vocal in the code enforcement issues and people doing business in the right-of-way, and go ahead and change it and do the right thing? Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, since most of that was directed against me, I'll say that I don't think we have done anything code enforcement-wise to anybody that was grandfathered in or begin with. These are new businesses. We're trying to change the things that were done recently that aren't being enforced. I am sorry that I drank out of the cup that I paid for. I didn't spend city money. And I drink out of it every day, all day long, and I'll probably continue to do that. Attorney's report.
May I say something before, may I say something?
In just a minute, we're gonna get to council.
Thank you, sorry.
I have no report. I feel like I have a lot of work that I'm doing generally, but I don't have any specific updates unless you have questions for me that I could answer.
We're keeping you busy.
You are.
Mario, city manager's report.
Yes, sir. We have a whole series of ads, bids, and RFQs that are out. We just put out a notice to bid for police radios. It is due on August twenty-fifth at twelve p.m. We just put out a notice of staff review committee for the building plans inspector. Those will be reviewed on Monday, the fifteenth, next week. We also have the staff review committee for the RFQs for...
Capital plan.
Capital plan, the...
Propetary trade modeling.
The modeling, and then also the impact fees. So those will be reviewed on Monday at, it says, two fifty-nine.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
It ends at two fifty-nine.
Okay, ends at two fifty-nine, thank you. Then there's a notice to bid for live streaming. That is due on Monday also, and that will be what upgrades our system here, so that we have new cameras and we'll be able to transfer over into the new building. We have a notice to bid for the Edgewater Lift Station, which is work that will happen in conjunction with the CRA. It will replace the sewer system that feeds that quadrant, and that work happens inside the parking lot, which is part of the project for the CRA. Which brings us to the CRA project. Those bids are due on September the eighth at two p.m. And we look forward to receiving those and kicking off that project. And then lastly, we are looking for a senior staff accountant. This was a position that was advertised and filled as a part-time person about a year ago. When we opened up that opportunity for full-time, unfortunately, that person was offered more money than we could afford. She went off to another location, and the other applicants just did not meet qualifications. So we did make some minor modifications to that job description, and we have advertised for that. We hope to start that process on August the nineteenth for people to come in. Staff has been very diligently working on the budget, and I'd like to commend the entire staff for that. You will see the product of their work here at two o'clock this afternoon, and look forward to walking through that with you. They've done a great job. And I, again, when I give accolades to, at one o'clock, I'm sorry. When I give accolades to one, like I did earlier with Al, keep in mind, all of our departments are doing absolutely wonderful jobs. I think we have the best. Police Department, best. Fire Department, best. Street Department, best. CRA. I believe that wholeheartedly on all of our departments. So just because I called on one, it doesn't mean everybody else, including recreation. We have the best park in Bay County and northwest Florida. So thank you to all of our department heads and all the people that back them up to make them look good.
All right. Counselor comment?
I have a comment for Mario, if I may. I'm not gonna go, you're just gonna have to sit here. When you're redoing cameras and so forth, and can we redo these microphones? Like the ones not even close to the counselor down there? There's not one on this side. There's only one on this side. You can't hear Amy. Other boards need those. I mean, can we, it is part of the sound system. Re-adding and moving microphones. Okay, thank you very much. That's for the people at home who watch us on television.
It'll be a high-definition system. It will also broadcast in a format that is in today's technology. So it'll provide us some safeguards and also upgrade all of that that might still have some strings and...
These might, these might have some value on eBay as collector's items.
I don't, I don't even think we'd do that.
The radios we were talking about, will they be on the same frequency as the Bay County? Is that all the same?
We'll still have some usual channel differences.
Okay. Also, with all the rain we've had, street department, stormwater, Al? Thank you, everyone. Excellent job. Thank you.
When we started receiving notices from Mark Bowen, we relayed that to our departments, and we started going out and proactively cleaning drains and making sure that if there were shrubs that needed to be pulled out, if boards had to be pulled out, whatever had to be done was done. We started putting signs up in places where if we needed a sign, it was already readily available, and we've been making those changes. So again, thank you to the street department, police department. I mean, it went all points bulletin. We included that to water and sewer, because their lift stations, you know, come up in those opportunities, and we did well. And we're also very thankful that we only got eleven or twelve inches, as opposed to the original projected eighteen inches.
And I was watching the Weather Channel, and Eric Seidel was standing on Panama City Beach talking about rain, and I said, that's in front of my place. I looked out there, and there he was. Anytime one of those guys is on your beach, you got potential problems, so congratulations to our guys.
Anybody else?
I'd like to go on record that I'm very, very much against having both council meetings at nine o'clock. I have to agree with Mr. Solis that there needs to be one.
I'd just like to throw out a thank you to the mayor for what he's done as far as the room goes and the looks of it. I have to overhear the conversation where he paid for a carpenter to come in and hang the pictures. He's paid for these plants to come and upgrade the length of the chamber here, and I think it's making a difference. It's much brighter, things that one doesn't have to do personally. And I appreciate the fact that you've taken that upon yourself.
If we're asking other people to look good, we should also.
I appreciate it.
And I made the comment, Mr. Solis, that I thought that Mr. Thomas had proved himself as a decorator and that it was still out how he's gonna be as a mayor.
Any more questions from the council? Move with, Jerry.